Tuesday, September the 3rd at 6:00 PM. Please call the roll.
Counselperson DeMonaco?
Here.
Counselperson Lassito?
Here.
Counselperson Kleinfeld?
Here.
Counselperson Owens?
Here.
And Mayor.
Here. Our first item is a hearing of the public. If anyone is not involved in this specific case, if you're a neighbor or someone, then you're welcome to come forward. I'll speak louder. Can you hear me now? If you're not involved directly with any of these cases, then this is the time that a neighbor or someone would come forward to talk. Okay?
No, well, we are involved in one of these cases.
All right. You'll get your chance. Okay. All right. Our next item is a show cause hearing regarding East Point Hearing Officer's Order for Demolition of a Structure Located at 24336 Latham. And the name on that is Anthony Pryor and occupants. Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Richard Albright appearing on behalf of the City of East Point. This is a date and time set for a show cause hearing regarding the property located at 24336 Latham in the City of East Point. There are several documents that I would like to have entered into the record. Madam Mayor, the first is a memorandum prepared by Mary Van Heren dated August 26, 2019, regarding this property with a recommendation from city administration. I'd like to also have entered into the record all of the notices that have gone out, including the transcript and the order from the hearing officer. The most recent notice is dated August 11th, prepared by the city attorney's office, putting the property owner and any occupants on notice of tonight's proceedings. Ms. Van Heren is present in the council chambers to answer any questions that the council may have.
Ms. Van Heren?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. A dangerous building hearing was held on this property on February 18th, 2019, for failure to register and certify the vacant property. The owner at the time was Raymond and Lydia Goings Trust. They did not appear at the hearing. The hearing officer's report of March 27th, 2019, required compliance with the vacant property registration ordinance within 60 days. On March 7th, 2019, the property was sold to Anthony Pryor. Anthony Pryor was notified of the requirement to register this property as a vacant structure on June 4th, 2019, and again on August 5th, 2019. That was through letters that the city sent him. He's not contacted the city or registered the property. Records show his address is on Keystone in Detroit. Notification from attorney's office was sent to the new owner at the address of record. The records show this property has been vacant since July of 2016. An inspection was done under the previous owner under a vacant structure registration certificate on October 24th, 2018. There were some violations cited that I did not include in the memo at the time. I neglected to advise you, at that time, the inspector required replacement or removal of the damaged front storm door, eliminating all the junk debris in the home, including furniture and garbage. The closets and basement and bedrooms were filled with junk and debris. And that they were to investigate and eliminate the possible leak on the ceiling, kitchen ceiling above the refrigerator, and then make the necessary repairs to the plaster or drywall, and scrape and paint the exterior of the home. We recommend to city council that you require the owner to register this property as a vacant structure, have the property certified within 60 days. Failure to do so should result in an administrative search warrant and a report back to council as to our findings.
Is there anyone representing this house? Ms. Van Heren, I have a question. On March 30th, 2019, a letter was sent to the previous owner, Raymond Goings, and yet the property had been sold on March 7th to Mr. Pryor.
Yeah, and Madam Mayor, I neglected to write down the date that the property transfer affidavit was filed with the assessor's office. That could be the difference there, because as soon as we know about it, those records are updated by assessing. Building Department does a transfer of that information to our system so that we, every day, so that we have the most current information on the property ownership. So, I'm just gonna, without knowing with any certainty, I would guess that it was, the property transfer affidavit wasn't filed by that time.
Madam Mayor, if I could also add to, the notice of the initial dangerous building hearing process, that was recorded with the Register of Deeds back on February 6, 2019. And I noticed the most recent document in the chain of title regarding this property is a quick claim deed, which was recorded on March 13th of 2019, and it is signed by both Raymond Goings and an individual by the name of Anthony Pryor. That document is dated March 7th, 2019, and it shows that the property was transferred in full consideration of $1.
I don't have any problem with all of that. I just had a problem with, if you go back to the records that we have for March 30th, 2019, the letter concerning, related to the hearing that was coming up, did not go to Mr. Pryor. It went to Mr. Goings.
Yeah, and anytime we have notice of a change in ownership or something on file with the Register of Deeds through a most recent owner and encumbrance report, that's why all documents that are sent out, including the report in order of the hearing officer, is always posted at the subject property.
Does anyone represent Mr. Pryor tonight?
Ms. Van Heren, I don't know if you know the answer to this, on when this was last or if it was ever certified as a vacant structure?
It was not ever certified as a vacant structure. They did, under the previous owner, do an inspection, as I indicated, in October of 2018, but those corrections, to our knowledge, were not made. We never re-inspected after that to confirm compliance.
I, because it's been vacant for three years, I don't know if I see the purpose in waiting 60 days. And so, I will just make a motion to direct administration to conduct an administrative search warrant and report back to council with findings.
Support? I would support that also with a letter directy to Mr. Pryor at his address.
It's probably just going to be, it almost sounds like it's going to look the same as it did probably then in October, though. Is there anything new that you'd be able to look up, Ms. Van Heren?
The house looks right now like it's being taken care of.
So, the city isn't doing any grass or maintenance on the exterior of the property. The reason I think we should do another inspection is because when we do a vacant structure inspection, we're not necessarily requiring the installation of a furnace if it's missing, or certain things of that nature. But in order to get a true picture of the condition of the home, I think an inspection would be warranted to give us more information. And it may not change that much from the last inspection.
Is there water usage?
There is no water usage, and there have been no permits requested for repairs.
Taxes are due and also owing for 2018, both summer and winter. Winter, the amount of $409. That includes $197.41 for delinquent water, $120.75 for grass and weeds, and then also the summer taxes for 2018 in the amount of $2,066.
How did the property transfer in 19?
Someone can do a quick claim deed, and other people may not even know of that transfer until they record it. I would notice, too, that there was also a mortgage, two Colonial Mortgage Corporation recorded back in 2008, in the amount of $169,500. And that was apparently assigned to Secretary of Housing and Urban Development in 2014, and that mortgage still remains on the property. It has not been discharged.
And that was a reverse mortgage, was it not?
I can't tell by the paperwork that I'm looking at.
Well, I'm just looking at the secretary. It says Reverse Mortgage Servicing Department on the address.
Could I actually amend my motion? Because I realize, jumping to the administrative search warrant, I'd like to amend it to, administration shall make reasonable efforts at all known addresses for 10 days to try to gain access for an inspection. And if not, if it's not done in that time, then proceed with obtaining an administrative search warrant and report back to council.
Support. Motion and support. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselperson Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Counselperson Lassito?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Our next item is a show cause hearing regarding the East Point Hearing Officer's Order for Demolition of a Structure Located at 173309 Mile. The people involved would be Melissa Viviano, Albert and Burgett Gaskill, and occupants. Mr. Albright?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Richard Albright appearing on behalf of the City of East Point. This is a date and time set for a show cause hearing regarding the property located at 173309 Mile Road. I'd like to have several documents entered into the record as exhibits, the first being a memorandum prepared by Mary Van Heren dated August 26, 2019, with a recommendation of city administration.
I, this is my property, and I can't hear anything that's going on.
Can anyone else in the audience here? Yes, everyone, okay.
Can you, can you just stand here? Can you hear us now, if we're right here?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
All right.
All right, and then you'll get your chance to speak. And the lady that came with you, maybe she can also help you. All right. So, what we're doing is, we're allowing the city attorney to speak first, and then we'll go to the sitting building director, and then we'll ask you for your input after that.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. You can just stay right where you are.
Madam Mayor, did you want me to repeat that intro?
Please.
This is the date and time set for a show cause hearing regarding the property located at 17339 Mile Road. My name is Richard Albright. I'm with the city attorney's office. I'd like to have several documents entered into the record before proceeding. The first is a memorandum prepared by Mary Van Heren, the city's building official. That document is dated August 26, 2019, with a recommendation to the city council from city administration. The next document is a notice of this evening's proceedings prepared by the city attorney's office, dated August 11th, 2019, indicating that the date and time for the show cause hearing is this evening, beginning at 6 o'clock. I'd like to also add into the record the other notices that have been sent or posted regarding this matter, along with the transcript from the dangerous building hearing, and also the report in order of the hearing officer. Ms. Van Heren is present in the council chambers to answer any questions that the council may have.
So, I would imagine you're Mr. Gaskill? Is that, is that correct? And then you can go closer to Mary. She's going to be talking next.
Mary can understand.
Okay, Ms. Van Heren.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. A dangerous building hearing was held on this property on February 18th, 2019, because the owner permitted occupancy of the structure as a residential dwelling and business without the required approvals. Eventually, it became vacant, and on June 5th, 2019, a vacant structure inspection was conducted. The following violations were found, and the owner failed to correct the violations. The violations were, cover the front windows, eliminate the leak on the west side front window into a bucket on the stage, eliminate the severe leaking on the back extended room on the back of the building, repair the cracked and broken and missing windows on the second floor, replace and paint the rotted wood on the back of the building on the second floor, scrape and paint the peeling wood trim above the back roll-up door, eliminate the leaking from the wall behind the water meter, replace and paint the rotted wood trim above the window from the, of the building, scrape and paint around the windows of the second floor above the front of the building. The hearing officer's report of March 27th, 2019, required compliance with the vacant property certification within 45 days. The owner has failed to comply. We did issue a court citation to the owner, and they failed to appear in court. We recommend that city council order the repairs to be complete and the structure certified as a vacant structure within 30 days.
Ms. Van Heren, I have a couple of questions. In the hearing on February 18th, 2019, Ms. Viviano, at that time, was saying that there was a squatter that had moved into the home, and that she was in the process of evicting the person, and that it was in court. And at that time, for what I'm reading in the documentation here, it sounds like she had every intention to do the work as soon as they could get the squatter out. And once you go to court, then you have to wait another 45 days. So, Mr. Albright, can you add to that?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any knowledge with regard to the status of the eviction proceedings.
Well, and I'm wondering, how did you get into the home? Was it an administrative order?
No, ma'am. Eventually, she did register it as a vacant structure and scheduled the vacant structure inspection, which took place on June 5th, 2019.
Which is, what, two months ago?
Three, but, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. If you want to talk in the microphone, tell us your story.
I'm Albert Gaskill.
Okay, thank you.
I own quite a bit of real estate, East Point, for 45 years. This being one of them. I sold this to Vivian Viviano, or, I don't know, maybe it's not Vivian, but Ms. Viviano. I hold a land contract on it. I've become aware of these violations. I have contract here. I hired a contractor to repair everything that's on your list. It's being all done as we speak, should be done complete in the next seven to 10 days. So, everything on your, you had nine, I believe it was nine violations, and I have a contract here with the contractor that I've signed. I've already paid myself half the violation, or half of the amount due, and I will issue a check when he's finished to your satisfaction.
So, Ms. Van Heren, did he have all the necessary permits that you were requiring?
I don't, I don't know about the permits. I know that I, last week, met with Mr. Gaskill and did give him the list of the violations, and we talked about if any of them required permits, that he would certainly have the contractors obtain them. I didn't look back today to see if permits were issued.
Maybe we didn't need any permits for all of these.
It may not have with the list that I was reading.
All right. What's your preference now, if he says he can finish this in 10 or 15 days?
Oh, I, again, again, I think if we can have the repairs made to the structure and have it certified within 30 days, we'd be happy with that result.
30 days?
I, I think you want to have things done within 30 days.
Mm-hmm.
That's, I talked to the contractor. He's, he's more than halfway done as of yesterday, and 30 days is nothing.
All right. We'll make a motion to that effect then.
Madam Mayor, I motion that the repairs be, be complete and the structure be certified as a vacant structure within 30 days.
Support. Move to support. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Lassito?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Counselperson Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
And counselperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gaskill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For putting up with my hearing.
No problem.
Our next item is a show cause hearing regarding the East Point Hearing Officer's Order for Demolition of a Structure Located at 23040 Piper. The names on that are Arvind Mandar, JP Morgan, Chase Bank, and occupants. Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. This is a date and time set for a show cause hearing regarding the property located at 23040 Piper in the City of East Point. My name is Richard Albright, and I would like to have entered into the record several documents which are associated with this particular proceeding. The first is a memorandum prepared by Mary Van Heren dated August 26, 2019, with a recommendation of city administration. There's also a photograph of the front of the subject property for reference. I'd also like to have entered into the record all of the notices that have been issued in this matter, including the most recent, which was prepared by the city attorney's office dated August 11th, 2019, putting the owners and interested parties on notice of this evening's proceedings. There being no objection, I'd move for entry of those documents. Ms. Van Heren is present in the council chambers to answer any questions.
Ms. Van Heren?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. A dangerous buil, and city council, a dangerous building hearing was held on this property on February 19th, 2019, because the property owners had failed to correct the violations from a rental inspection and failed to certify the rental property. The structure became vacant about September of 2018. Records show there was most likely a water main, or a water break in January of 2019 with a huge spike in water use. I spoke with Mathino, who is a property manager in February of this year, and he indicated that the house is vacant, and they'll start making repairs and then complete the repairs within 90 days. The hearing officer's report of March 28th, 2019, allowed 90 days to make the repairs and certify as a vacant structure. No permits have been issued and no inspections conducted since the rental inspection in 2018. There have been some code violations regarding the grass and weeds on the property this season. We recommend that the city council order this property to be certified as a vacant structure within 45 days, or seek an administrative search warrant to inspect the interior and determine the feasibility of repairs, and report back to council with the findings.
Is there anyone here about this house? Anyone from Morgan Chase?
Ms. Van Heren, do we know if there's been any water usage since?
There has not. I checked today.
Did you hear back at all from JP Morgan?
No, I had no calls regarding this matter from anyone.
Because it sounds like they came to the last hearing.
Yeah, there's still, Madam Mayor, there still is showing an open mortgage from JP Morgan, which was recorded back on April 16th, 2013, according to the most recent owner and encumbrance report that we have, which, that is dated August 10th. I would also note that the 2019 summer taxes are due. That includes a delinquent water bill in the amount of $3,141.42. There's also a charge for $884.77 for abatement. There is a 2018 winter tax is due and owing, and that includes $587.38 for delinquent water. And it does show individual by the name of Arvind Pal Mandar as the owner of the property. He took, that individual took ownership of the property by warranty deed back on April 16th, 2013, which is the data, which is the same date as the recorded mortgage.
What would you like us to do?
I think that we should seek an administrative search warrant to inspect the interior and determine the feasibility of the repairs, and then report back to council with our findings.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that administration take 10 days to make reasonable efforts to gain permission to inspect the property, and if unsuccessful in that time, to seek an administrative search warrant and report back to council with the findings.
Support. Move to support. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Counselperson Lassito?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Next case is show cause hearing regarding the East Point Hearing Officer's Order for Demolition of a Structure Located at 20825 Redmond. The name on that is Keisha Lynch on the McComb County Treasurer and occupants. Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Richard Albright.
Excuse me, you're, Keisha? In the back.
Did I say he's just gonna step out?
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Richard Albright appearing on behalf of the City of East Point. This is a date and time set for a show cause hearing regarding the property located 20825 Redmond in the City of East Point. I'd like to have entered into the record several documents as exhibits, the first being a memorandum prepared by Mary Van Heren dated August 26, 2019, with a recommendation of city administration. I'd like to also have entered into the record several other documents, the first being a notice of this evening's proceedings prepared by the city attorney's office dated August 12th, 2019, which was served via certified mail and also posting at the subject property along with all of the other notices that have been sent to the interested parties and the occupants, including the report in order of the hearing officer and the transcript from the dangerous building hearing. Ms. Van Heren is present in the council chambers to answer any questions.
Ms. Van Heren?
Thank you, Mayor Pixley and city council. A dangerous building hearing was held on this property on February 18th, 2019. The owner failed to appear at the hearing. The property was brought for a dangerous building hearing as the owner failed to register or certify the property as a rental property. The rental certificate expired on January 22nd, 2017, at the same time Ms. Lynch was the owner of the property. Tickets were issued and a bench warrant is outstanding. The home is occupied. There's daily water use as of today. The water bills are not paid and typically go to taxes. The hearing officer's report of March 27th, 2019, require compliance with the rental program within 45 days. We recommend city council require compliance with the rental certification within 30 days, or will obtain an administrative search warrant to determine the condition of the property and report back to council with our findings.
Mr. Albright, I have a question about the taxes.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
In that February hearing, it, I couldn't understand why this wasn't in a tax reversion.
It will, the city may be able to purchase it next year. There was a certificate of forfeiture of real property taxes recorded on March 27th, 2019, for the 2017 taxes. So, the 2017 taxes in the amount of $4,846.58, those are presently due and subject to forfeiture. The 2018 taxes are, winter taxes in the amount of $670.34 are also due, and that includes a delinquent water bill of $570. 2018 summer taxes in the amount of $2,648.2, those are due. And the 2019 summer taxes, the amount of $4,017.44, which includes $723.32 for delinquent water, those are also due presently.
So, it looks like the '19 tax payment was to cover the 2016 taxes.
I'm not showing that there was any payments.
Well, there was, in the hearing on February 18th, 2019, it showed that there were unpaid taxes for 2016 of over $5,000.
Yeah, those aren't, the most recent owner and encumbrance report I have, which is dated August 15th, those are not showing as being due any longer. So, we, it just goes back to 2017. Those are due, and those are subject presently to a certificate of forfeiture. So, it looks like somebody had to pay the taxes for 2016.
The lady that owns the house lives in Girl's Point Shores.
The current owner, Ms. Lynch, is the owner since at least 2017, when a quick claim deed was recorded with the Register of Deeds on July 26, 2017. There are no open mortgages on the property.
I guess my issue with giving them time and then doing an administrative search warrant is I don't know what we would do with those results. Because, I mean, the issue is, it's been not certified as rental for over two years, being rented, ignoring all the water bills and taxes. And, and the owner shouldn't be able to rent out that property if they're not going to get certified.
I'm wondering, why do you consider it unsafe?
I don't know that we do.
That's what it said.
But it's, it hasn't been inspected or recertified as a rental property, and we know it's being occupied as one.
I think we need to move ahead.
Two and a half years.
Administrative search warrant.
I think an administrative search.
Especially with tenants living there and it being uncertified.
I think the 10 days, again, try and get in contact with them again, you think, and...
Well, my alternative thought was giving them the 30 days to certify, and then allowing the attorney to file a nuisance abatement just to give them some motivation for compliance. But if...
If they stop getting run.
Mr. Albright?
That's...
Forward.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
The county treasurer, she just paid taxes, so there's gotta be a telephone number somewhere on somebody's record that you could, couldn't you just call Mrs. Lynch and say?
I can attempt to reach Frank Kresha with Corporation Counsel to see if they have a phone number on file.
Have anybody tried to contact the people that actually live there?
I don't think we know who lives there. Mary has... Has anybody from the administration tried to contact anybody, any of the occupants?
Our process is that we, we do send letters to the occupant, as well as the property owner, when we're attempting to certify a rental property. We also post a notice on the door advising them that it requires certification. So if the occupants opened the letter and read it, they would have been aware of that or saw the sticker on their door.
They don't have any contact information, like a phone number for the occupants or anything?
We do not.
And our office did send notice of tonight's proceedings, not only to Ms. Lynch at the Putnam Place Gross Point Shores address, but also addressed to this property on Redmond. We also sent a letter to, just a generic title, occupants, as well to that address. And then, and it was also posted at the property.
So the people in the front row, did you know this lady, Ms. Lynch? No? All right.
Would council prefer an administrative search warrant before nuisance abatement?
I mean, I don't, I don't know if it's necessary if we're going to do a nuisance abatement.
Well, that, that was my concern. Regardless of what the results from the search are, the next step is nuisance abatement to force compliance.
I would, I would prefer administrative search before you did the nuisance abatement.
How does the remaining council feel?
I agree with having the search first.
Okay, I will make a motion that administration make reasonable efforts to gain permission to inspect the property within ten days, and if not, proceed in obtaining an administrative, administrative search warrant so that they can report the findings back to council.
Support. Move to support. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Counselperson Lassito?
Yes.
Our next item is a show cause hearing regarding East Point Hearing Officer's Order for a Demolition of a Structure Located at Two three seven seven nine Schroeder, Franklin Carpenter and Occupants. Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. This is a date and time set for a show cause hearing regarding the property located Two three seven seven nine Schroeder. My name is Richard Albright, appearing on behalf of the City of East Point. Madam Mayor, I'm pleased to report that just before the, tonight's proceedings, Ms. Van Heren was able to determine that the property is now in full compliance with the city's vacant structure ordinance. A certificate has been issued, and there is no need to hold a show cause hearing this evening. And Ms. Van Heren's in the, in the council chambers to answer any questions that the council may have.
Anybody have any questions?
I have no questions.
No questions.
All right, moving on. Our next item is continuation of a show cause hearing regarding East Point Hearing Officer's Order for Demolition of a Structure Located at One five seven two seven Semra. The names on that are Shannon D. Elliott, Lakeview Loan Servicing LLC and Occupants. Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Richard Albright, appearing on behalf of the City of East Point. This is a date and time set for a show cause hearing regarding the property located at One five seven two seven Semra. I'd like to have entered into the record several documents as exhibits, the first being a memorandum prepared by Ms. Van Heren dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, with a recommendation from city administration. The other documents include notice of this evening's proceedings prepared by the City Attorney's Office dated August twelfth, two thousand nineteen, and also the, the report and order of the hearing officer, the prior notices that have gone out related to this property, and also the prior transcripts. Ms. Van Heren is present to answer any questions.
Ms. Van Heren?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. A dangerous building hearing was held on this property on January eleventh, two thousand eighteen. Ms. Elliott appeared at the hearing and indicated she's still trying to work things out. That's between the mortgage company and, and the property owners. The house was in foreclosure, but she said she would take care of the weeds in the pool and repair the garage. A show cause hearing was held in September, September fourth, two thousand eighteen. Ms. Shannon Elliott appeared at the hearing. She is the daughter of the deceased owners and was still trying to get the house returned to her. City council tabled the matter for, I said forty days, and I, I think that might be a typo, maybe it was thirty, but, and required that she clear the brush and resolve all the violations. The property was finally taken over by Shannon Elliott on March seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. The house has remained vacant and has been vacant since about July of two thousand thirteen. The property has not been registered as a vacant structure and appears to have a lot of overgrowth in and around the pool, in and around the property, and the swimming pool is not being maintained. We recommend City Council require vacant structure certification by the owner within forty-five days.
So, Ms. Elliott, is that you in the back? Would you like to come forward, please? Sounds like you've had a lot of fun.
Not so much.
What would you like to say?
I finally won the lawsuit, so I was able to take possession of the house. And I won the lawsuit or I got notice on March twenty-second, I thought, and then finally got my paperwork, May, Cinco de Mayo is when I received it. I've tried to take care of it with the brush, and I want to keep the pool. If I have to remove it, I will remove it and take it to my other house. But the pool is all aluminum, costs probably more than my home right now I live in. The pool liner is out, so I do have to, we go there four or five times a year, me, people I hire, anybody I can, to clear, because the pool liner is gone. The rest of the pool is still in great condition. There's no rust, there's, there's no, nothing wrong with it other than the pool liner, and obviously, stuff does grow up around it, and some of the stuff, no matter what I spray in there, it just, it comes back and trees come back, so it's...
So...
I'm try, the, the garage too, the garage was, first a tree fell on it, I had part of it re-roofed, then the, the power line fell. I've made so many claims, I, I can't, this would be my fourth claim, I, now I'm just stuck, I'm gonna have to. I think I, I'm, I have somebody with me, and I'm going to try and sell it now because I just, it's cost me all this money and all this work to keep this house, and now, now I'm, I have no money left to, to keep it.
So I'm, the pictures that we have in our file tonight are pretty old, they're from two thousand and eighteen and seventeen?
Yeah, 'cause every time, when I come here, I stopped. I didn't want to keep working on the house 'cause I didn't think I was gonna keep it, and I was paying all that money to try and upkeep it when I wasn't sure that I was gonna win my lawsuit, on top of filing a lawsuit and paying attorneys to keep my parents' house. Still, we were still going over and maintaining it. I had lawn guys cutting it and doing the best I can, trimming the trees. You can't see any, like, it's not an eyesore driving by. Sometimes the rain, this, this year's been really bad since I got it with the rain, but I, I can't keep up. I can't make another claim on the house 'cause it would be the fourth claim on the garage, actually on the house itself, so I'm, there's an open lien on it from the city, and I wanna sell it because I just can't, I can't do it no more. It's too much.
So how, what would you like to see done? Would you like more time?
What has to be done, like immediately?
Ms. Van Heren, what would you like to see done?
So it sounds like the house hasn't been occupied since about July of two thousand thirteen. It's about seven years from, we require properties in the city to be registered and certified as vacant structures. We've not done an inspection on the interior of the home. And, and we see some violations on the exterior, but we haven't, you know, we haven't done a full inspection, so I'd like to see it certified as a vacant structure.
Ms. Elliott?
If we were to give you sixty days to get it certified as a vacant structure, could you do that, or sell the home?
Well, I, that's what I want to, there, I can't sell the home 'cause you guys have an open lien on it. And my attorney tried to contact the attorneys here and gave my attorney some roundabout figure, but I need something, that has to be paid before I can do anything with the home.
Why do we have a lien on it?
Probably for dangerous building proceedings, but those get paid at the closing. That's not gonna hold up a closing.
So I can, I can, that won't hold up my, so if I sell it, the title company will go to, because they told me they wouldn't be able to do it.
Madam Mayor, there was a dangerous building hearing invoice in the amount of eighty-two dollars and fifty cents.
And we have a lien on it for the eighty-two dollars?
There's also two thousand nineteen taxes for delinquent water bill for one thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars. No, I'm sorry, this is the wrong one. My apologies, I'm already one step ahead. Let me just get the...
Why don't you, why don't we come up with a plan, and then you meet with Mr. Albright to talk about the lien?
Okay.
Well, can I ask, Ms. Van Heren, can the home itself be certified as vacant while there are still outstanding violations with the pool?
No, that would be one of the violations that we would require compliance with before we certified it.
Madam Mayor, that, that lien was, for this property, was also eighty-two dollars and fifty cents.
But, I mean, my concern, I think, is really with the condition of the pool, and I don't know what the current condition of the garage is, but you indicated you might be interested in selling it, and if you're unable to bring the pool up, you know, the usable condition, I, I don't know if that's gonna be more of a hindrance for you to move forward than it would be to remove it.
Well, I'm selling it to family that's gonna keep the house. I want the pool, but...
Is it movable?
I mean, no, it's a big aluminum, like kayak pool, so it's not, I'm, I have to figure out, but I'm, I'll take the pool with me somewhere somehow. I just paid that pool off for my parents, like, two years ago. My parents, no, I'm sorry, two years prior to my parents' death, so now it's been about four years, but, I mean, we just paid it off. It's an expensive pool, it's aluminum, and I've had a whole bunch of people, like my landscapers, everybody's wanted to purchase this pool, and I kept saying no 'cause I wanted to live there, but...
What do you think about at least the city coming in doing a vacant structure inspection, or you try to sell it then in the next, you know, sixty days, or something like that?
Why would I need a vacant structure? My, my, all my family's stuff, everything we cared about is in that house. So why would I need a vacant structure? I don't understand. To sell the home, I need that?
We, we just like to make sure that the properties are safe and, you know, there's not, like, water leaks, gas leaks, things like that.
I'm not renting it, though. I wanna, I mean...
Well, right, but if no one, yeah.
But nobody is living in it.
Right, nobody would live in it until I sold it. I have, right, my plan was to sell my other home in East Point and move back here, 'cause this home is bigger, it's a lot better than my current house, but after fighting and paying all this money to try and upkeep it and winning the lawsuit, that took every penny I had.
So, so, yeah, if you're going to, even if you're gonna sell the home, I would, we would want it listed as a vacant structure until it's occupied. So, yeah, you would still have to have it registered as a vacant property.
Regardless of what your intentions are with the house, when a house is vacant, it needs to be certified as a vacant structure, when it's being rented, it needs to be certified as a, as a rental. Do you foresee being able to meet with the building department and getting it certified as a...
So that means I have to pay that money to certify it and let you guys come and inspect the home?
Yes.
That's what that means? I mean, I, I'll, I'll talk to my attorney about that. I don't understand why I would have to go through all of that to sell the home.
And then I think it would also benefit you if you speak with the city attorney and come up with a plan, perhaps. But in the meantime, we need to come up with a plan from the city's point of view. So, somebody wanna make a motion?
Ms. Elliott, you can just have your attorney contact me regarding this. What, what is your attorney's name?
I can't think of his name right now, but he's tried to contact you a couple of times and only, like, left a bunch of, like, I have a bill with your name all over it from him trying to contact you, and he says he could never make much progress and only got ahold of you one time. 'Cause I think you gave me your business card, and I gave that right to him, and every time he calls, I think it's the Aaron office or something like that? That's your office?
Erie O'Brien.
Yeah, okay, Aaron O'Brien. That's the office he called, and he said he could reach you one time out of, I mean, I will tell him again, and he's left messages.
You don't recall his name?
I can't, my, my, what is his name? I don't have my phone 'cause my kids have it, I can't think of his name.
Okay. Well, if you, if you speak to him this week, please have him call my office.
Okay. And then I go from there and, or what do we do?
Well, Ms. Van Heren, at this point, after hearing our discussion, do you have any changes to what your recommendation was?
No, I don't.
Madam Mayor, I motion that the owner of One five seven two seven Samra, register the home as a vacant structure within the next forty-five days.
I'll support.
Is that all right with all of you? Please call the roll.
Counselperson Lassito?
Yes.
Counselperson Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
And Mayor Pixley?
Yes. Okay. Thank you for coming. Our next item is the continuation of a show cause hearing regarding East Point Hearing Officer's Order for Demolition of a Structure Located at One seven one one three Springer. Octavia Minyard and the Macomb County Treasurer and Occupants are people of interest. Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Richard Albright, appearing on behalf of the City of East Point. This is a date and time set for a show cause hearing regarding the property located at One seven one one three Springer. I'd like to have entered into the record several documents as exhibits. The first is a memorandum prepared by Mary Van Heren dated September twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, with a recommendation of city council, and also a notice of this evening's proceedings dated August eleventh, two thousand nineteen, prepared by the City Attorney's Office with listing this evening as the date and time set for the show cause hearing, also the prior notices, the transcript from the prior show cause hearing, along with the report and order of the hearing officer, and the transcript from the dangerous building hearing. There being no objection, I move for entry of those exhibits. Ms. Van Heren is present in the council chambers to answer any questions.
Ms. Van Heren?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pixley and City Council. A dangerous building hearing was held on this property on July eleventh, two thousand seventeen. A fire occurred in this house on March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. Multiple permits have been issued and then canceled for failure to complete the work and have the required inspections. Currently, there is an open plumbing permit with an inspection conducted on June eleventh of two thousand nineteen that resulted in violations. If work is to continue, a building permit, electrical permit, and mechanical permit must be obtained and issued to the licensed contractors. A show cause hearing was held by the City Council on September fifth, two thousand eighteen. The owner did not appear at the hearing, and council granted her ninety days to complete the work. We recommend that City Council require completion of all the work within sixty days or schedule for demolition.
Is there somebody here for this address? Please step forward, and your friend can come with you.
Hi, my name is Octavia Minyard.
Can you speak directly into the microphone?
Hi, my name is Octavia Minyard. And I applied to the electric, that passed, the rough draft pass for the, for the plum, what is it, electric and mechanical. Everything passed for that except for the plumbing. And I did hire a contractor for the plumbing, he ran away with my money, so I'm hiring another plumber to finish the job for me.
So the plumbing was related to the fire in the kitchen, is that correct?
No, yeah.
'Cause in reading the background on this, there was a fire in the house that affected the kitchen?
Yes, it was a...
The kitchen, the roof, and the ceiling?
Yeah, got all that done.
And, but you gutted the whole entire house, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and you finished the, you pulled out an electrical permit?
Yes, and I passed rough draft for the electric and the mechanical.
I'm sorry, both the electrical and the...
Mechanical.
Mechanical pass?
Yes.
So the only, the plumbing permit is still out?
Yes. And the building permit is out. I don't have that. The only two permits I don't have.
Is this man the man that's doing your contracting?
No, he didn't.
I helped her do the work to the house and most of it is all done. We just waiting on the contract, the building contract, but we can't get that until the plumber get passed. She hired a plumber to try to finish it, but he ran off with the money, didn't finish the work. But right now, she in the process of trying to find a new plumber to get the work done so we can continue to get finished with the building structure. Everything is just about done. We just need to put the insulation and drywall in.
I'm looking at some pictures of the house before and now, and it looks like quite a bit of work has been done because the newer pictures have all new windows in, in...
How much time do you need to complete the work, do you think?
It depend on once you get the plumber. If the plumber come in and finish the work in a minimal time, we can start on the installation and drywall. If we had to pull the building permit, we can't pull that until the plumber get done.
I have a question for Ms. Van Herren.
Yes.
So was there an electrical permit pulled and was the work completed?
There was an electrical permit issued and it was canceled for failure to complete the project in the terms of the permit.
Okay.
So it was not approved, as was the building permit and the mechanical permit were also canceled for failure to have inspections and do the work, complete the work.
But I have the proof stickers on the windows that it been approved. Rough draft proof, rough draft for the electric and mechanical have been approved. I have stickers on, in the windows right now.
So they may have had rough inspections that were approved, but then those permits were ultimately canceled when the work wasn't done in a timely manner. Permits are active for six months and then when an inspection's done, they go for another six months. But these were invalid because of the length of time.
So you never had them come out and re-inspect after the work was completed, is what she's saying. She said that you pulled the permits, but then you never had the city come back out?
They came out and he approved the rough draft.
The rough draft, but it hasn't been completed yet?
Well, it can't get completed until we finish the drywall and installation.
Nobody told us.
Right, and they said they wouldn't issue us.
Okay, so they, so you, okay.
Now, I want to ask a question about that. They should, my understanding is, pull the electrical permit again and, or like have it inspected and approved because if they're moving on to drywall, I'm assuming that that will make the inspection aspect hard?
That's exactly right. So permits are required and inspections are required in a certain sequence. All your rough trades have to have those rough approvals conducted before you can insulate and before you can drywall. You can get the permits for those other trades, but you have to get those inspections prior to installing your insulation and drywall.
Okay. Has your recommendation changed from what was in your memorandum?
No, unless they feel that they need, you know, 75 or 90 days to complete the work. We just, it's been going on for so many years now, we just can't keep permits open that long and work isn't progressing. At least not that we're documenting.
I think normally I prefer to have demolition as, as the alternative if the work's not completed. But I would be happy in this circumstance to just make a motion that all the appropriate permits be pulled and approved and all the work be completed to the city's satisfaction within 60 days.
I mean, I'm fine with that, but I would almost, I mean, I'd be happy to give them even 90 days because it sounds like there's a lot that needs to be done when you're considering doing the drywall after the plumbing and the electrical.
Excuse me. I had three contractor, I had three contractor run away with my money. They didn't get done with the work. Then I had to put more money in to hire other people to do everything back over again.
Well, I'll amend my motion to 90 days. That's fine with me.
I would prefer the 90 days because I think they've made a sincere effort to fix this house. And in fact, the fire inspector on two different occasions documented that it could be done in a short period of time, but she chose to go ahead and completely gut the house and, and start all over. And the previous hearing officer where she presented said that the contractor had run out on her and took all her money, so.
Three of them.
You gotta be sure you get a really good contractor.
I be checking the background, see license and everything, and when they get half of the money, they take off.
All right. So we have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
I wanted to know, is 90 days fair? Do you think you can get it done in 90 days? I had to say 90 days and you can't get it done. Is 90 days enough time? I mean, for you to have paid these people and lost money, now you gotta get the money back.
Money back, I know.
Is 90 days fair? 120?
Yeah, 120. Should be all right.
I mean, if she tried and people took her money.
Yeah, and I understand that, but when we don't have some sort of action at the end of the 90 days, it would be up to administration to bring it back to us for another hearing if, here again. So I would rather just keep it at 90.
I'd like to keep it at 90 days and then if there's a problem with that, to come back.
Okay.
All right. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Our next one relates to a show cause hearing regarding the East Point Hearing Officer's Order for Demolition of a Structure Located at 17394 Springer. Is that right? The names on that would be Corral of Michigan Consulting and Occupants. Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of counsel. Richard Albright appearing on behalf of the City of East Point. This is the date and time set for a show cause hearing regarding the property located at 17394 Springer in the City of East Point. I'd like to have entered into the record several documents as exhibits in this matter, the first being a memorandum prepared by Mary Van Herren, which is dated September 26, 2019 with a recommendation of city council. Also, notice of this evening's proceedings. That document is dated August 12, 2019, putting the owner of record on notice of this evening's proceedings. Also, the prior notices that were sent out, including the report and order of the hearing officer and the transcript from the proceedings. Ms. Van Herren is present in the council chambers to answer any questions.
Ms. Van Herren?
Thank you, Mayor Pixley and City Counsel. A dangerous building hearing was held on this property on February 18, 2019. A real estate broker, Darrell Hearn's, appeared at the hearing and indicated that he had a purchase agreement. The city council required the property to be certified as a vacant structure within 45 days. The sale of the property took place on May 17, 2019. The new owner submitted an application and payment for the vacant structure certification or certificate on August 15, 2019. An inspection is scheduled for September 16. We recommend city council require certification of this vacant structure within 60 days, which should give ample time for the inspections to occur and repairs to be made. Corral of Michigan Consulting owns six properties in the city and they are aware of the vacant structure registration program requirements. Since the time of the hearing, we have issued permits for all the trades and some of the inspections have been approved. And as I indicated, they did pay for the vacant structure inspection and have the first inspection scheduled. So again, I think 60 days will give them enough time to finalize this certification.
Is any, oh, sorry. Is anyone here representing Corral? If not, Mr. Kleinfelt?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to give the owner 60 days to have this certified as a vacant structure.
Support.
Move support. Any further questions? Please call the roll.
Counselperson Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Support.
Please call the roll.
Counselperson Kleinfelt?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Pixley?
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Yes.
And to everyone, this is my last show cause.